Yeah, Mike is knowing well.
Are we on?
No.
Okay.
Um. Or we're not starting. It might have just.
It might have just started, yeah. Okay.
Yep, it's on now.
Okay.
Did that get you guys in?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Did your basketball game get canceled, Greg?
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
I went from kind of being concerned on this is going to all work with Quorum, but we're not going to have an issue, so.
I almost talked to him. I think it's too cold to charge.
Well, we have one extra over there anyway. I did think of it tough right now. Is this mine? That's.
Okay, or oh, runs like this.
Yes, I meant share.
You can look at the bills if you want to, the extra one.
Sure.
Sorry, I could have thought of it earlier. I kind of actually didn't really think of it, so you said here.
Yeah. One inside.
Not that I'm all about it.
We would have held this one.
I assume that when I saw other schools cancel. It's just a bummer because they don't get that many anyway.
Yeah.
Do they reschedule them?
Is Jenny going to be here?
No, she was, but because of the changing plans, she's not.
Then if you don't get everybody to be there, then.
That's what she was going to stay here and go to that.
Oh.
Six in Adrian, so she's going to go to that.
I thought she couldn't, but it's tough.
Okay. Go ahead and call the first meeting to order for the public hearing. We have a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So next we have the proposed plans for the twenty twenty-five Civil O'Chiden building renovation. Is our public hearing on that?
Yep, so we're just have a hearing if there's anyone here from the public, and I'm going to assume not for the the renovation project that is proposed for this summer.
Okay. Seeing there is.
There's none, so.
None, so we will go ahead and adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Saga.
Okay, we adjourned from that one.
This is the only ones that count, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Industry.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, we will go to our meeting concerning our calendar, and I'll call that meeting to order. And is there any input on the twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Just for a second.
Second.
Okay, we adjourned.
And that is five thirty-two, so.
And we're right on time then, aren't we? Okay, so I will call our regular Board of Directors meeting to order. And we did not have anybody fill out the visitors' form, so we will move on to. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that is passed. We will go to our five school board basics, put students first. Greg?
Follow the law and our own policy.
Respect the chain of command.
Based decisions on shared objective information.
And operate in the public eye. Okay, next we will move to our consent items. Kendra passed out some more bills. They're all pretty normal things, I guess. I don't know if anybody has questions. Are there any questions on any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. We will move on to our administrative reports. Start with Mr. DeZao.
Yeah, so back into it. Was very thankful for the couple of extra days of break. I feel like our students and staff were ready to come back. It's always a little bit of a bittersweet time, of course, but just comparing it to some neighboring districts, some of those kind of things, it felt like the the extra couple of days really did us good. And so we're thankful for that. Yeah, just kind of back at it. January can sometimes be a long month, and as we come back, like I mentioned in my noted report here, we jump in with our winter assessment testing period, some of those kind of things, and so those are all going really well. The kids really have gotten back into the groove, and yeah, it's good to see them again, and and we're kind of chugging along, really, I guess would be a summary of that report, so. Looking to kind of at the end of last, they're looking to do some different school-wide activities to break up this difficult stretch. Sometimes, you know, we go about three months with one day off or two days off here or there, and so looking to to implement some things where we can continue to have high engagement of our students and staff, so. Working through professional development conversations for IT PDP goals, teacher professional development goals and plans. Continue to use our Wednesday's time for that. We continue to also use the Wednesday time for math curriculum review as we look to implement a new or or re-implement our current, but a new curriculum for our revision cycle, I guess, is how I would put that, and then our mentoring program, so. And just thankful for the participation of those in our community for the toy drive. I know that blessed a lot of families with that as well, so. Second hand, one, so it was good. Staff attendance and professional development attendance is listed there at the end. Pretty straightforward, kind of just back at it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hertz?
Yeah, a lot of similar things to talk about. Just feel like the semester's off to a great start. Been super impressed with our students. We've had all year just very few issues behavior-wise. You know, they've gotten used to cha- schedule changes and all kinds of things, and I think our kids are just really resilient and doing a great job, so. Sometimes we don't acknowledge that enough. We got great kids. Uh, working on our district career and academic plan, and at our next board meeting, I'll present that. Get a PowerPoint, then I'll present, but just goes over how we're meeting the state requirements for college and career readiness. You know, post-secondary readiness. All those things, so we'll go over that, the four-year planning that our kids do. That's all rolled into that one plan, so. I'll present that in the February meeting. Coming up, our, one of our staff meetings will be dedicated to adding some additional information to that D cap plan. So there'll be more added to it, and every year we seem to be adding more to it to try to keep meeting those state requirements. Like Mr. DeZao mentioned, we also came back and started with iReady and FastBridge testing at the middle school. So that's a lot, two hundred kids, and you know, it's multiple assessments, a math assessment, several reading assessments that go into that, so. And that's for state reporting as well, that we need to do that. Based off that, we create our intervention plans. Other students who need intervention based off their assessments, so. Lot goes into that. Grateful for Barb's help and Katie Schroeder, our instructional coach, spent a lot of time, and Julie Schuler, that spent a lot of time getting that organized and helping to get kids tested. For professional development, been meeting with individual teachers to go over their professional development plans since we've been back. A little over halfway through now, and I think I made the deadline end of next week, so, or end of this week, so we've got some time to get the rest of the staff in. Those meetings are going well. Just really liked the opportunity to sit down with each teacher one-on-one, see how the year's going, and give them a chance to ask or, you know, share whatever is on their mind, and then we go over their plan and how they're making progress towards that, so that's been really good. Activities, we're in the thick of things for winter sports. Jazz choir has been practicing regularly, jazz band has been practicing. Robotics has been going and esports soon, you know, so we're, there's a lot going on, and also large group speech is getting ready. They've got a contest two weeks, Saturday, two weeks.
Is it this Saturday or next Saturday?
It's next, one, it's this week, I think.
This week, Saturday, right?
So lots going on. Um, we made an adjustment to how we're managing the cell phones at the high school. I have more details in the board report. I won't read all that, but essentially, students prior to this, we didn't clarify where the cellphone needed to be during class time. We've clarified that now. We want it in a pocket chart. When the original policy was put in place, we purchased pocket charts. Every room has a pocket chart. And that's where kids, for the most part, were putting phones, but as time has gone on, more and more are not doing that. So that's a change that we made to have students place those in the pocket chart, and so far, that's going really well. We've had very few issues. We've definitely got a few kids that were using either decoy phones or trying to sneak them into bathrooms during when they would go to the bathroom, so it's helped us get a better handle on that. Study hall time has been, you know, much more productive. There's less distraction there. Because that clarification is for study halls and for in the classrooms, so. And again, we have great kids. We made that adjustment, and they've been doing it, so.
And that pocket chart, I'm assuming is like to put it in a.
Yeah, there's actually two on the wall there, the yellow. When you walk out, you can see the other side of it, but it's just, it just hangs on the wall, and it's got thirty pockets, about the size of a cellphone. Yep, each kid has a number assigned to them for each class. That's where they put it, and that's where it stays till the bell rings, and they grab it on the way out. Yep, so work's pretty slick. It's definitely a lot cheaper than the lock boxes they got at Sheldon. So I think it's a great, great tool, and it's going well so far. Conferences are coming up, February third and tenth for the middle school and high school. Teachers have been able to adjust their schedule. We give them access a little bit early, and then we'll be sending that out to parents on Wednesday for them to sign up for conferences. Teresa Ruggles is planning on doing a FastFah information meeting that night, too, just for any parents or students who have questions about how to get that filled out, so. Then at the bottom is our staff attendance for professional development and regular attendance.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hertz. Mr. DeZao?
Um, trying to touch on a few things that I won't hit on in other parts of the meeting, but specific with some of the goals and things that we have set out. A lot of discussion been had with the AEA and our curriculum team, and we're actually meet with the AEA on Wednesday this week. Just they have so many changes going on. What does that look like for their service delivery model outside of special ed? And figuring those things out, and they're trying to figure out funding and staffing, too. And just using them for, you know, how much will we use them in in the future, just even for like math support and curriculum work, and so I've spent a fair amount of time at that. Did some work with our long-range needs assessment, and I'm still working on setting up a time and connecting with Louyanta, figure out we'll do a work session to pop process through that with you guys as well. That's not as time-critical, so I've had a few proposals, but I've pushed that off because we really would ideally get that done by the end of the year to be in place for next year with some of those goals, so that is out there, and I'll keep you updated. Oh, yeah, processing early retirement papers and things from staff, and and you can see that, and just had a lot of conversations about what our staffing needs will be for next year and trying to fill that and balancing that with things that we're talking about, our unspent balance and things like that, and where we're at with projections, which I'll talk about in a little bit here, so I I won't say too much more on that. The financial stability and viability part, I attended a budget workshop this past Friday with Kendra. That went well and getting started on that, and we'll talk about that some, but there's there's steps and things that we have to do to abide by the statutes and guidelines that the state puts out. Continuing to look at our financial projections. Tony's here this evening, and we're going to look at a bid for cameras and swipes. Spent a fair amount of time on that. Carla and Chrissy, I want to do a shout-out on this. We finished our nutrition slash food service audit, so that is supposed to occur about every five years with COVID and some other things. It's been seven since they've been on-site for us. That went really well. The things that we got cited on for that audit are minor in the grand scheme of things, and like any audit, if you've had an audit, they're going to write something down, right? So they they're very minor, so. I just wanted to say here at the meeting, thanking Carla for all her work on that. That's been basically, almost seems like a daily conversation or weekly conversation we've been having since like July one. I mean, that's not really exaggerating. That's literally kind of what's been happening, and then Chrissy on the back end lining up the paperwork and the dollars and things that go with that. So it went well overall. We had great comments, so I appreciate all their hard work. And then just other things and talking with legal counsel about our processes, and we don't fill positions, so that's really all I have right now.
Okay. Moving on to board committee, or were there any questions for Mr. DeZao? Okay, then we will move on to the board committees.
So both the finance and the facilities met on the fourteenth, and we went over some things in preparing for the rest of the spring coming up here, winter, spring, whatever you want to call it. Policy, we've had a lot of meetings, and we've done some virtually few, and some of the ones tonight, I didn't even present to them because they were minor in changes, but we've gone over that, but does Greg or Jamie have a brief summary maybe of what we discussed with our finance committee meeting?
Um, not really, I guess. We just talked about some upcoming negotiations, I guess, what that was looking like, and maybe what the legislative session would bring.
That would be the big thing.
Yeah.
Yep. And some projections and thought I was preparing to get ready for tonight, so, yep. And then Kristen or Jamie for facilities? Anything you guys wanted to bring or summarize?
Appreciate you taking us around and, you know, showing us what your ideas were on some of the weight room stuff and other bush machine issues and office stuff throughout the buildings. We don't get to see all that area all the time, so.
Yeah, we did just a mini tour of some of the things we're looking at or that have been repaired, or that we're looking at doing for projects coming up, and just so that they kind of have an idea as we're talking through those things, so.
We'll move on to recognition of excellence.
So we have the Vocal Arts Festival, and it says, this year I introduced the Morningside Vocal Arts Festival as a new opportunity for my high school choir students to grow and gain recognition. In early October, I submitted nominations, which the Morningside University team carefully reviewed based on my recommendations and each student's accomplishments. This festival is openly, open exclusively to sophomores, juniors, and seniors, making it a unique honor for those selected. I'm delighted to share the exciting news that every student I nominated was selected to participate in this prestigious event. The official announcement of this, of the accepted students was made on October thirty-first. This past Sunday, Monday, Sunday and Monday, sorry, guys. Um, January twelfth through the thirteenth, the selected students attended the festival at Morningside University, participating in two days of rehearsals and workshops that accumulated in a spectacular performance on Monday evening. Here, the students were accepted proudly and represented our choir at the festival. So for sopranos, we had Jordan Carpenter and Sekira Alanis. They were both juniors in grade eleven. And then for altos, we had Erica Rosenberg, a senior. Olivia Lopez Wargare, she's a sophomore, along with Presley Henning, another sophomore. Then for tenor, we had Wyatt Cry, a junior, and then for bass, we had Alan Mejia, who's a senior, and Gabe Mandyhoof, who's a junior. Then generals of the week for December were the first week, the sixth was elementary, we had Christopher Julius, middle school, we had Blaine Matia, high school, Tristan Boss, and for staff, we had Greg Greenfield. Then on the week of the thirteenth, we had Lena Trample for elementary, Alexis Braun for middle school, Amelia Hookshire for high school, and for staff, we had Shannon Shaper. Then the elementary on the week of the twentieth, we had Simon Austin. Then for middle school, we had Jocelyn Hager. Then for high school, we had Christopher Bremer, and for staff, we had and then a sign-off. Thanks for having me. I gotta go back to practice now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Reagan.
On article the paper, Reagan.
I know, big, big athlete stud that's never done it before.
We'll move on to our discussion items, literacy goals.
Yeah, so Mr. Weersma's here this evening as the curriculum leader for the social studies department, so. I will let Mr. Weersma speak. You bet.
The presentation, our PowerPoint. I shared it today, but I didn't share it with you, so I can maybe just type.
Um. Did you share it with me, you said?
I reshared it today, but it was the same one as past years. I just edited, so I haven't shared with you.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Actually deleted some stuff. I know with the weather and there's a football game tonight, so.
What's it called here? I'll pull it up.
I deleted it. Um, board presentation, social studies board presentation twenty-five.
Yep, there it was, SS.
There we go.
So, yeah, so if you have questions, you can ask me. Like I said, I shortened this up a little bit. Just a couple of things I want to go over with, so you can. Uh, you go to the next one, Mr. DeZao?
Yeah.
Me, there's where I'm at here. It's actually a good thing I do this every year because then I can keep track of how many years I've been here. So seventh grade, contemporary global studies, eighth grade, U.S. history, and now a section of pre-algebra this year. So and then there's the rest, and the big thing, I think most of you know, I graduated from here in two thousand and three, so. Our agenda or objectives for today, I'll just introduce these social studies teachers and the curriculum members, some new changes to social studies this year. It's a couple of challenges and then some focuses, and then if you have any questions at the end, you can ask me, so. Okay, so you probably are aware, but we did have some some new this year, so we have Mr. Ruggles and Mrs. Fink, Ms. Fink in the high school. And then this year, fifth and sixth grade, social studies now, it was teacher not replaced, so past teachers have picked it up. So Kate Wedge is doing fifth grade, and Jean Nag is doing sixth grade. So they're not on the curriculum team, so I don't meet with them often. And then the elementary teachers who are on our social studies curriculum team are there. That's the social studies team and those who teach social studies here at the district, so. Okay, a couple of changes. So this one was kind of actually put together at the last minute. Maybe Mr. Hertz can talk a little bit more about it. But we switched U.S. history from eleventh grade to ninth grade this year. And so for, there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, so eighth grade, the class that I teach is colonial times to the Civil War. And then in U.S. history in high school, they pick up right after that with Reconstruction and go to the present, but in past, it had been in eleventh grade, so there is a two-year gap there. And so to kind of keep things more continually, we moved that up to ninth grade, but also just kind of looking forward for staffing and things like that. If I would have to pick up a high school class, or if a high school teacher would have to drop down, it just makes sense that that was a continuous thing. So and in talking to Mr. Hertz, the freshmen are a little light on required classes. And as they get older, they want to take more college classes, so I think just moving this to freshmen, I think has been good. I've only talked with so there is a little bit of trouble with that because, you know, there's a hole there because everybody still needs to do it. So there's actually four classes of U.S. history right now.
Yeah, it's a two-year transition, so freshmen are getting U.S. history, and so are eleventh graders. The eleventh graders, that was planned in, you know, and previously, eleventh graders took U.S. history. So they're getting it, and once they're through, we'll have one more grade that still needs
Yeah.
U.S. history, our current tenth graders, so both will get freshman and next year's eleventh graders will get it. And then from there, it'll just be a freshman class moving forward. It's kind of a two-year phase out.
And world history will stay sophomores, I believe, tenth grade? Is that what it's?
Yep, yep, that's stated.
So I just, I was kind of at the, towards the spring, right before they started signing up, and a little bit of us motivated by me, too, if 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 I would have to you know, picks and things up, or if a high school teacher have to drop down, or whatever we do in the future, that just seemed to make a little bit more sense, so. I think it's been going good, and of course, as a social studies guy, timeline, I would think it should just keep on going like that, so. And then, of course, in the other big changes, there's not a fifth and sixth grade teacher that just does social studies. It's being covered by different classes, and whether that will stay the same going forward or that will change, that's, don't know right now. So we'll just kind of see what happens with that, so. Any questions about that for me or Mr. Hertz or anything, so? From talking to the high school teachers, they've liked it, and Ms. Fink is, it's been a couple of years since she's taught U.S. history, so I think she's actually enjoying kind of going through that and brushing up on some of that stuff, so. Okay, uh, just some challenges kind of from social studies perspective that, this first one is often kind of joked about among my other peers who teach a reading or math or sciences. We are not a tested subject on ISAPS or anything like that, so they always like to give us a little hard time that or how we're doing on our, or when we're reviewing scores, they always want to ask me how we're doing, or we're doing a good job or anything like that, and I say, well, we're crushing it every year, so.
Trash talk.
So, yeah, we don't, we don't, we're not on ISAPS, we're not in any of the yearly monitoring like iReady or Fast or anything like that, so. And I kind of get down to, I'll address this a little bit later, but then the then the next one is the elementary has so many other responsibilities, and especially with now the interventions and things like that, that often when I talk to my social studies uh, elementary teachers that are on the curriculum uh, team, they don't get tons of opportunities or time, not through their fault or anything like that. It's just, it's hard to get social studies in in the elementary, so. A lot of times, they actually don't even come over to some of our meetings, but we're looking at ways to try to support them, talk to them a little bit. Find some more materials, reading, curriculum kind of things that kind of may be tying with some other stuff, but. And then I knew this bottom one already, but with the new fifth and sixth grade teachers, especially the K eight standards, they're very broad or vague. If you would just go check them out, I think I've talked about. So I think the intention behind it was to give us choices and opportunities to select what we want to teach. But that can be challenging, especially for either new new teachers to the profession, or like this year, new teachers to social studies. So like my seventh grade standards are very vague, and it was a little bit daunting at the beginning, but I I love that course of that I've created and and the things that we talk about. There is one, one unit, one area that I'd really like to make a little bit better, or maybe find something a little bit different, but. I mean, for example, like a a subject or a standard for seventh grade would be like conflict. And that can be anything, so. Now it gives more, you know, just like explain how conflict comes about and ways possible people solve those conflict, but it doesn't tell you like, study this topic. So that was a little bit intimidating at the beginning, but I've really, really enjoyed it. We're wrapping up a world religion and conflict unit, and so we spent a lot of time on the Middle East and Palestine and Israel and stuff like that, and that's been really good, and the things in the news make it that much more easier for me to teach. You know, I I do my best to answer kids why they need to reduce fractions and things like that, but like this kind of stuff is pretty easy to you know, and then it's cool, I teach that in seventh grade, so when the eighth graders come in and say, I heard this on the news, and we talk about those kind of things, it's it's really fun, so I have a huge advantage with that, so. But it can be intimidating uh, for new teachers or like Kate and Jean, but they've got Julie, and she's taught all that before, so I think she's helping them out a lot, but because they're very vague, it can be it can be hard at times, so. But because they're very vague, it can be, it can be hard at times, so. Versus the US history one, that isn't so bad. That's a little bit more timeline, topic based, but. So with that, um, just kinda how, things that I talk about with the social studies team and kinda how I run my class, uh, kinda how we focus as social studies teachers, because we don't have to pass tests, we don't have to worry about those kinda things, um, for social studies in particular, but I do for my school, cause they're my students and I teach here, but. So first and foremost, we wanna teach our curriculum and our standards, right? So that's always the first thing when I look at what we're teaching in, in lessons and stuff like that. We have, we have to teach our curriculum and our standards effectively, yeah? But especially for me, I really wanna, um, support or supplement what other core areas are doing. It's a little bit more difficult with math, but for reading and writing, I wanna really make sure that I'm trying to do what I can to help out those teachers in social studies. So, um, I've had many conversations with Mrs. Manns. I use a lot of, like her parts of a paragraph, and we have conversations about, you know, using I in acad-, you know, I, my, me, in my opinion, I think, and try to avoid those things in academic writing. So I, I really try to get on the same page with what she's doing, especially now that she's got eighth graders stuff. And so in the future, you know, I know she's, she leads a curriculum team, but I'd love to have her come to the social studies meeting sometime and talk about some things. I've incorporated a novel into seventh grade, and that was really, really great. I love teaching that unit. That's just a couple of years ago. And I'd like to put one in eighth, uh, grade as well. So those are the things we, we try to, even though we're not tested, we try to help out with our reading and writing just to make those other, you know, make it better for the other teachers as well. And then also, like especially for me, I focus a lot on current events too. Uh, they've provided great opportunities for class discussions. I mean, eight, ten years ago, trying to teach protective tariff is, was more difficult than it is now. I mean, I just, I pull up a quote of Trump saying, my new favorite word is tariff, and then we can just talk about it, what it is. So, that has been, uh, very helpful. And then also, I wanna make them lifelong learners and productive citizens. You know, that they're saying correct knowledge, they know what they're talking about, those kinda things, so. And then lastly, um, with the broad standards, I wanna select material that, uh, will be most relevant to their daily lives and will be beneficial to them in the future, cause there's so much in, in history and, and topics that we can discuss, so. That's kinda how I think about social studies and I'm going about teaching and what I want our social studies teachers here in the district to do, so. So any questions about that? Go to the next one. Uh, so just a couple of things moving forward. Uh, we're, again, like I said earlier, we're looking to help the elementary teachers for some material to kinda support them. Julie wanted me to mention that the sixth grade is going on their annual, I think it's annual now, field trip to Des Moines on May, and then I talked about, you know, looking into that and, uh, for an album unit for eighth grade, so. Go to the next one. Uh, any additional questions for me, right now?
So what's the novel for seventh grade?
Uh, it is actually titled Refugee, so it follows three different refugee stories in three different timelines, which when I first read it, I wasn't totally in love with, but it actually works really well. So the first refugee story is from the Holocaust. The second one is from Cuba in the nineteen nineties, eighties, nineties, um, with their embargo and, you know, all the, uh, wet foot, dry foot policy and people trying to get from Cuba to the United States. And then the third refugee is, um, from two thousand and fifteen fleeing Syria in Basir al-Assad, who was just overthrown a couple of months ago, so. And then, I don't know if you're gonna read it or not, are you gonna read it? They, all three stories connect at the end. So, like, the Syrian refugee is a child, he flees to Germany, and the family that he is host family is the Nazi refugee as a, as an elderly lady, so.
Very cool.
Yep, yep, so. It's been, yeah, I enjoy it, and, I don't know, I mean, I've got some training with teachers, uh, with reading and stuff like that, but I, I remember when I was a kid, I really enjoyed when teachers read to me. So I try to do some of that, a lot of that. They still have to read some on their own, and they've got questions and projects and things to answer, and, um, but I try to read out loud a lot to the kids too. I love that as a student, so. So yeah, and I don't know, I haven't pursued eighth grade, it's history. I'm sure there's a great one out there. I just haven't dove into that yet, but, so, yeah. Kids like it too. The eighth graders ask what book we're reading this year, and I say, well, I don't have one picked out yet, so. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Um, I, and I went to school here, I love SO, so I think it's a great place. We have great kids, and it's what, um, our, our semester is off to a great start in the middle school too, I think. So we have really, really good kids and do a lot of good things, so. And again, if any of you are welcome anytime to, if you have any questions, email me, come talk to me. You're welcome in my classroom or anything like that, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks Ryan, thanks for all you do.
Yep.
Okay, on to the board policy moment.
So I thought a, a quick maybe policy trivia, but you know, do we have to have the initial public hearing or on the school calendar, and why are things so restrictive? Or is it just Mr. DeZale being difficult, um, and so forth? So you kinda get the answer there, but on the bottom, our policy, and it is following Iowa code is a, for whatever reason, we're going slow here, but basically, our policy follows code, but you can see, we do have to have public comment on it, um, an opportunity, whether anyone comes or not. And then the objective is for me to present that to the board. We have the choice in, um, days versus hours. It talks about those things. Let's see if I get this to come up here. It's not coming up. Hey, there it is. So as you can see, it says the calendar will cap, um, accomplish or accommodate the educational program, and it's for a minimum of ten thousand hours. Um, that's the method we choose to track. And includes but not limited to the days for student instruction, staff development, in-service days and teacher conferences. And then it talks about our minimum may include five days or up to thirty hours instruction primarily over the internet if needed. That's talking about, um, we may in those times where we have excessive snow days. And then it goes through the lesson. I'm not gonna read the whole policy here and everything, but there is a reason why we do that, and this is one of those, you know, we've talked previously about things that are school choice or mandatory policies or ones required by, um, the legislature, and ISP lets us know, and this is one that we have to have a policy on the school calendar, and so this is that, and that's why, that's why we do that to meet it, so. It's kind of a little simple policy thing there, so. The, the next thing that I wanted to go over, um, I've, I've shared this with our admin team. We've talked about title before. Um, we have two title teachers in the elementary and the funding that comes with that and so forth. But just a little bit about how those calculations, and we're to the point now typically, most of the time just through our staffing, that we're expending all our funds and don't have a lot of extra, about where does that come from and how do we get that? So I'm not gonna read the whole letter here, but I received this in, in December. But if you look at the beginning, it says, find the attached tables that show the twenty, twenty-three population and poverty estimates for your local education agency or LEAs, they'll refer to this often, in your state and state level estimates. And it goes on, and then it, that we had to verify this, and you can read more if you're real interested in. But based on what our local poverty rates are, that's a factor that the state uses when we're distributing those ti- those federal title funds. And so, they had a table that this was on, and, and I put this on here intentionally and highlighted it. Um, I changed it, they had it sorted, I think it was alphabetically or by district number. I changed it from greatest to least, but in, in short, what they do in our state and, and in others that use title funding is, based on federal and state tax returns, they know roughly how many tax returns in your district and how many of them marked dependents that were age five to seventeen. And then based on those returns, the number of children on those returns marked as dependents that were, um, in houses that were considered at or below the poverty line. Now remember, the federal poverty line is a low, a pretty low bar. You can be above the federal poverty line and still qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's something different. But just how they're classifying that. And so what you'll look at here is the highest percentage of students who come from families in poverty is at the top. Okay, so that'd be that Seymour School District, and then it goes. So we're looking at this third, fourth column right in here. I highlighted Sibley O'Cheedon's here. So, in Sibley O'Cheedon, it's talking about having on the census roughly a hundred and twenty-three kids that were identified in poverty out of a total population from that data point of seven eighteen. So roughly seventeen, a little over seventeen percent of the students that were identified on there come from homes that are in poverty. And I point that out because if you look, I haven't counted, but what are we, twenty-fifth on there out of all districts in the state? And maybe as a point of comparison, you'll look right below us, Fort Dodge has a lower percentage than us. Sioux City Community Schools is about six, eight spots below us. And then you have to go down even farther to find really anyone close in northwest Iowa. And I point that out just to kind of show, number one, they're using this data to support our funding. That's not the only data source, but they use that in addition to, you know, our, our student enrollment and things like that. But it also indicates, just gives an overall picture of maybe some of our demographics and the, and the different population in our district that we're dealing with on a daily basis. Yes, we have great kids here, and the majority of kids do great things each and every day, but we also know that that has looked different over time with the backgrounds and the family, um, dynamics that they come from, and that's changed over time than probably many of you who are graduates from here or this area, and what that looked like when you went through school. So that was just something I wanted to share, just as we talk about, we see on the school admin, maybe less so teacher side of things, but just making our community aware of that, so. Questions on that right now? Okay, and with the next point, just, I was kinda trying to tie the two together, but I was talking about this in one of my meetings that I go through, community meetings, and Joe Hytrader was talking about similar stats that he had. So he shared this website with me. Joe is the CEO of our hospital here. Something that he gets that, you know, it's county health statistics, but they have a wide variety of things on there. And something that I thought was, um, the link is on the bottom here, but I wanted to pull this up. I took these as screenshots from that link that I had on the page before, so that if you're looking at this data. But things that are specific to us, socio and economic factors is one of the things they're looking at. And you'll look at here on this page, and this was from a year earlier. They're talking about children in poverty, and so they had, you know, I just said we were at seventeen percent. I think this was from a, a fiscal year earlier, but they had it at fifteen, rounded the nearest whole percent on here. As you can see that, to give a comparison point, so if Osceola County's at fifteen percent, Lyon County for that same metric is at eight percent for that same year. And I just compared the upper four counties here. Sioux County's at eight percent for that same metric. And O'Brien County's at ten. So you can see, yes, they have families that are impacted by that as well, but we have a higher percentage than that, and ours has gone up even since that's happened. Another factor that's on here, and I, and I took this and I just put it more or less in a table, but there's another thing they call children in single parent homes, so this, taking that same data from, um, tax returns and whether that's married filing jointly or those that are from single parent homes, they use that. And so just factoring that in here, children in poverty, those are the percentages I just went over, but the children coming from single parent homes in Osceola County, that was twenty-seven percent of children were coming from single parent homes that were identified through this metric. In Lyon County, that percentage is at ten. In Sioux County, that percentage is at seven, but in O'Brien, a little higher here, it's at fifteen. So just using that as a frame of reference, not asking for pity or anything, but just a, a reality of some of the changing socio-economic dynamics and family dynamics of many of the students that come into our schools every day. So kinda comparing those points. So any questions or comments on that?
Interesting.
Yeah, it, it, it is. Sometimes a little striking in the face. I would say, once we look at it, even administratively, we were talking about this last week. It wasn't like we were surprised though, either. I mean, we're, we're seeing that, but it's just maybe data backing that up. You know, and we've had conversations about that, but it's sometimes is a little reality check when you actually see the numbers, right? All right.
Okay, we'll move on to conference update.
Um, just giving you an update as things are going, there hasn't been a lot of change or information in the, in the last month. I, I think some of that will happen now as everyone's having their January board meetings. The ADs are scheduled to meet this week. Today's the twentieth, so they're scheduled to meet on the twenty-second. The ten, three-day conference schools to start looking at this for different sports. And, and, um, some of the sports, just by the nature of their rules and dates, and the number of competition dates, I should say, that you can have, they're gonna have to look at some divisions or things like that. And then they're gonna at the end of their meeting have those other six schools come in, so I think there'll be more information after that, um, what that looks like, schools that think that looks or works and schools that don't. But, um, I will keep you updated on that. There isn't a lot of other information, but I just wanted that out there so that you know that's happening. I think the week after the superintendents are meeting, and I don't expect us to have anything to vote or discuss other than our normal meeting, but that's gonna happen. We will probably in the next month, if I get some updates on that, I might set up some times or reach out to you guys as board members individually for some one-on-one discussions on that, so. I don't have anything else specific, cause there isn't else, anything specific to say, but I just wanted that out there as an update for everyone, cause I know that's been asked by a couple of you already, so. Questions with that that I can answer?
Okay, seeing them, we'll go on to mid-year financial update.
So one of, yeah, with one of our policies is, and one of the things that's required is to give you guys kind of a, a mid-year financial update or estimate. So I'm gonna open this. This is a report that's been done typically from year to year and just kind of a year-over-year par- comparison. So it shows actual FY, goes back to twenty, so roughly five years, right? And then FY twenty-four, it says estimated, usually by this point, we know stuff. Sometimes things, things can change and be updated, and then obviously, for the year we're in is FY twenty-five, an estimated update there, um, some of the lines that are important. What I wanted to point out here is, it shows what our maximum budget is and our unspent authorized budget, what that's gonna look like, and if you're looking carefully, some of these numbers from years past should look similar. But from FY twenty-three, that four million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, to FY twenty-four, the four million, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, it went down, and if you look, about two hundred and seventy thousand. And we've talked that through. I think when we actually talked about that in October, I told you a number of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. The final number right now is two hundred and seventy, due to an error by the state, not at Sibley O'Cheedon. It was an error with miscellaneous income and some other funds that was done statewide, and I think affected every district. Every district's number changed based on that, so. Um, instead of, I think we, when we last talked at a board meeting, it was two hundred and thirty, but in the end, we went down about two hundred and seventy thousand. What I want to show on the next line is here, right now, based on our information at the mid-year point, we're projecting to go down about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The thing that I wanna point out with that is, when Kendra and I were looking through this, that's honestly, less than the last few times we've looked at this. We've had higher numbers than that. That's gone down. So in the grand scheme of things, I think we're, we're pleased with that. I think we were both kinda surprised that it was projecting that low. Would that be fair to say? I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah, it made sense that, that when allowable growth was higher than we expected for open enrollment.
But yeah, it went down, and to kinda show a comparison point, typically, historically, at Sibley O'Cheedon here, what has happened the last several years is where we're at, or the estimate of where we'll end up mid-year is usually worse than where we actually end up. And usually significantly so. So going back to FY eighteen, they were estimating to be down about twelve thousand bucks on their UAB, the report at mid-year. They ended up to the positive at seven hundred thousand. Okay, so that was a change. Now, that was kind of an anomaly, those two years, but that was a change of over seven hundred thousand. I'm not saying that'll happen this year, but I'm just, I'm just pointing that out. The next year, they thought they were gonna be down mid-year at about a hundred and forty thousand. They ended up to the good about six hundred and eighty thousand. And you, you can, you can see, but typically, and you can see the actual change from mid-year to the end, we have ended up better than what was projected. I'll go back two years ago at the mid-year, and, and I do remember this. We thought we were gonna be down three or four hundred thousand. We ended up that year down just seven thousand, six hundred. Last year at this time, we thought it was gonna be up to six hundred, just short of seven hundred thousand that we were gonna go down, and we ended up going down about two hundred and seventy thousand. Does that mean we're gonna have that big a swing? No, but I do think we could end up better than what is predicting, and if you look historically, that's typically what happened.
Most of it's from very conservative budgeting.
Right. Yes, we try to.
In case, you just never know.
Yep.
What's gonna happen.
So expenses are less than what they think or you get more money?
Both, both usually.
Typically both. I would say
More, more on the expense side.
Yeah.
Some of that was S R dollars and stuff that weren't anticipated. Yeah, and a lot of it is expenditures. We usually budget high, the, the most that it's been in the last three, four years.
This year, it'll be good to see where we end up. We don't know for sure, but just with the changes legislatively in some of the T S S dollars, that's supposed to fund the teacher minimums, where does that put us by the end of the year? We just don't know, because that's new and every, I mean, we're at a workshop on this Friday and everyone's grappling with that same question. It's hard to predict exactly where you're gonna end up, because no one knows. We haven't even been through a year of this yet before, and then what that looks like for next year. But I, I think in the grand scheme of things for our district, this is promising. Other questions for you guys? Don't have anything else to add then.
We'll move on to new business. Consider approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar.
So we didn't have anyone to speak at the beginning, the proposed calendar, really compared, compared to last year. Last year, we had quite a few different changes and things in terms of P D schedule and other things. There's not a lot of change on here. The, the biggest thing I, I guess I will point out in, in speaking, our last day of the semester would be Monday, the twenty-second. And then we'd come back with students on the fifth. Um, I had some staff initially asking about not going on the twenty-second, ending on the, on the nineteenth. But just the way the days work out, there's not a lot of other flexibility. We can't go any earlier than we're going. Um, and at the end of the year, we're pushing right up to Memorial Day already. Um, and we'd be short a day in there. I did send this out to our calendar committee and some of the people that asked last week. I did a poll of local schools, other than one who was thinking of changing, everyone else was for sure going till the twenty-second in the Sulan. Most were going till the twenty-third. Not all, but most were going for sure till the twenty-third, so. When I did that, that kind of answered people's questions and concerns over that, I would say. Other than that, there's really, other than carrying it forward a year, there's not a whole ton of changes to talk about on here.
Are there any questions on the calendar? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Did you get that one, huh, flex snake?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that has passed. Consider approval of H VAC service plan renewal.
Um, so we just seen a motion, it was a three-year proposal, and we're in year three of that, and the agreement is a is as attached. And I listed out the price there. I was trying to find it on here. I didn't have it pulled up ahead of time.
Fourteen.
Fourteen eight thirty-five?
Yeah. I thought it said that here in the contract, but. There we go. Fourteen eight thirty-five, so I'd recommend continuing.
Is it a three-year agreement then?
This is the third year of that, so we'd ask for a proposal next year for, or this coming year to.
Oh. So this is just the last year of the.
Yes, yep.
Okay. Questions on that? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve H VAC service plan renewal.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that has passed. Consider continuation of board approved.
So the P E P L, the physical plan and equipment levy, there's two components. There's the voter-approved part and the board-approved part, and to continue the board-approved part, which is for thirty-three cents that we've been utilizing, that needs to annually be part of our budget and approved each year, so this is just a motion for us to continue utilizing the board-approved portion of P E P L.
Any questions on that? Okay, is there a motion to approve this? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that has passed. First reading of board policies.
So the two policies, the one came from our visit with the nutrition or school meal audit onsite and just having to make some changes to follow policies that were already enacting and that in line with their recommendations. And it just deals with how you're handling students with a negative balance. Not a big change at all, but it was recommended from the audit that we had. The other change is coming from, which I'll speak on a little bit here, but from our school safety grant. And then getting our numbers to line up with, with the federal guidelines for procurements. If you're like, didn't we just up these last year? You're right, but updating this to match the federal guidelines, so to be honest, it'll help us smooth through the whole grant process for our school safety grant, if they line up. So those are the two changes.
Questions on that? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of following policies. I just skipped the second reading of seven oh five oh one and seven ten point oh four.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That has passed. Consider approval of proposed cameras.
So, in the past, sometimes when they are listed, it's, we're voting on three separate projects. I want you to know, we're just voting on one and approving the recommendation. I was trying to put that all in one, and it was really confusing to look at all the information, so that's why I separated it out, because it looks like it's three bids, but I wanted to be clear, it's not, it's for one project, the three bids, but putting it on one item, it was really convoluted to look at. So I asked Mr. Beavers to come, Tony Beavers to come tonight and maybe talk through this. So there's three bids that we had to receive as part of the school safety grant for our doors. Swipes and camera projects, and the three are listed here. The overall amount, they didn't break it down as well, but from American Alarm bids came to a hundred and thirty-four thousand and change. Safe and Secure, you can see the amounts that are listed there, came to a total of a hundred and sixty-five thousand if you put them all together, but approving them individually there. But the one that we're looking at, um, and I broke down by the different things that are happening, came to about two hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, and before I go any farther, I'll let Tony talk here, but just as a reminder, the school safety grant, which we'll use to pay for some of this is a hundred and fifty thousand. This one is beyond that, so we would pay for that out of our P E P L and save. But there's a reason why we would be recommending this, so I just wanted Tony to speak a little bit on that.
Sure. I'm still getting over bad cough, so I apologize if it's starting my throat constantly, I'll try not to. So right now, the current system we have in place for the doors and surveillance system is about eight years old. A lot of these cameras are uh, low resolution, they don't have great vision. For example, at, at the middle school, we have incidents in our gym. You hope that that person is not at the center of the gym, because it's gonna be very difficult to figure out exactly what's going on. You just can't see everywhere. So we want to replace all of those cameras throughout the buildings with much better cameras. All modern cameras now have artificial intelligence built into them, so they will also detect things like gunshots, screaming, fire alarms, that type of thing. Uh, breaking windows. They will automatically detect and alert on those types of things. So it's basically a rip and replace of everything we have now. That's what was on our wish list, that. All three of these vendors got a list of exactly what our requirements were and what we wanted out of the project in the end. What we want is a unified system that has the door system and the camera system unified, so it's all one system. So for example, if Kent has something going on in his gym, there's some damage in the elementary gym over the weekend, he can pull up a an incident on the camera, and during that time, it will also tell him who swiped in and out on the doors. Or if we're trying to figure out where a student went during the day, we can mark that student, and then the cameras will show us where he moved throughout the building, he or she moved throughout the building. Those are all things that I know they would love to have, that they ask me all the time if we can get. Uh, we don't have that ability right now. And the one that I'm recommending is the only one that really is a unified system. The other two are basically separate systems, two separate apps, but they will, they will work together, but not in the way that the Genetek system. So this way, uh, it also has a remote app, giving them the ability to view the cameras remotely. Uh, unlock the doors remotely for somebody who needs access to the building, check doors and make sure they are locked. Uh, check doors and make sure that they're closed all the way. The new door stops have that ability built into them as well, they'll let you know if a door isn't closed. Um, it gives us better abilities to schedule a lot of the doors. We've got some doors now that students are able to just pop open. Which causes a lot of problems throughout the school day, like lunchtime, for example, when students are supposed to be going out the front door and checking in and out. If they can bypass the front office to do that, to make their own lives easier, they'll do that, so this will help fix some of those problems. So, uh, and I understand when you look at that price, it's a little shocking. It shocked me a little bit too, but you have to keep in mind that Genetek is, is the only one that met all of those requirements that we asked for. So this was our, they could do everything we asked for. It's, it's pretty amazing. So, and cameras are generally replaced about every four years. So we've gotten about twice the life of the existing system we have that people normally get out of. Which is pretty good. So they're also a local vendor, they've got a couple of technicians in the area. Uh, they've got their systems in a couple of other schools near us, and they love it, the schools that have it. Uh, Safe and Secure was my second option. I've done work with Safe and Secure in the past. When I was in Watertown, we used Safe and Secure. They're also a great system. Uh, their technicians are good to work with. And honestly, I can't say I've ever worked with Genetek, but the schools that I talked to that have worked with them had nothing but good things to say about. So. You have any questions I can answer?
Says Gen, uh, Genetek or Parallel or the same place or same company or?
Uh, Parallel Technologies is the parent company that owns Genetek. They're the ones that sell the Genetek product. So most of their bids, when they come back, we'll say Genetek on the top of the bid, and at the very bottom, it's Parallel Technologies is the.
Yeah, I just wanted Tony to speak in that, because if you had a specific question, he could answer that far better than I did.
Are there things that we are wanting here from Genetek? Similar to what the other districts you checked with are?
Yes, um, well, some of the districts have had Genetek for a few years and don't have some of the options we did want. One of the options specifically is the ability for uh, these guys to walk up and be able to check doors, that kind of thing. Open up doors using an app on their cell phone, they can do that. They can walk up and instead of having to carry a door card around with them, they can use the app on their phone, hold it up to the door card reader, and that will unlock the door. Things like that. The full control with a mobile app is a big feature I wanted, because that's something that all of these guys should have by now. Uh, a lot of them do. A surprising number of them don't. Genetek does have. And it's all in one app. You don't have to, you know, when you, when you wanna unlock the door, you don't have to look and go, was it the Genetek door system? Was it the surveillance system? Was it the? You open up one app and you have access to everything. I mean, it's an impressive system.
Surveillance for the high school looks like a big number. It's bigger because?
Because we have a lot more cameras. A lot more cameras and a lot more doors with door swipes. So, and when you add a larger number of cameras, you're also talking about a larger server that you have to store that data on to get the retention, kind of video retention we want. Which is, we want it up to sixty days of video retention.
And some of the stuff that would be the infrastructure servers for all three buil- buildings, correct me if I'm wrong here, but you and I talked about is also kind of listed under the high school part as well.
Correct, yep.
Is it for parking lot and outside too, or just buildings?
It's for everything, yep, including outside. And it's for some additional cameras and spots that we're not getting coverage in now. And as well as additional door swipes for doors we wanted to add. For example, the middle school doors, uh, right now, if, if those doors are locked, most of the staff don't have access to get into the copiers on the weekends. We wanted to add those. When we do the, the new entryways at all three buildings, uh, we're going to include a couple of extra door swipes because we're adding a couple of extra doors, so we had to have those door sides, so we figured we'd bundle them in now, so they're already there. We just have to move them when they get here.
And everything for the new entrances coming in will be covered?
Yes, yep, we ordered all the hardware necessary for the extra doors. It's all included in this.
So they're putting it in?
They're, yes, they're putting all of it in.
So you're gonna put it in now, and then they'll be updated again afterwards, or you're wanting?
No, we'll put them, I'll use the high school, for example, we'll put the one in at that main door. We'll also have the other cable run, so that the existing cabling is there. So then when they put the barrier across that entryway, they just have to run the cable down and put the door swipe on. So it'll all be set up, ready to go. They just gotta run the wire down the frame and put up the door swipe and we're good to go. We don't have to worry, the existing hardware will be identical to what we already have in place on the other doors.
Were any of these expenses, and maybe Dan knows the answer to this, or maybe you might too, Tony. Any of these expenses part of what we approved for expenses for the new entries?
A little bit of it, they have factored in. We had that discussion with, his name's Russi from SiteLogic. And so, um, as part of that, we've had conversations with them. Wasn't a, obviously a huge part, but it was a part of it, so that they know they're aware we're we're doing this and figuring that this is covering those swipes, and they won't have to as part of that project. I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yep, it is.
Yeah, Genetek also had, of those three companies, uh, the first one didn't come to the school at all. They relied completely on my maps and any information I gave them over the phone. Safe and Secure came a couple of times. Genetek has been here multiple times with questions. They wanna relook at doors, they wanna make sure they get the right hardware. Having the attention these guys have given us over the last six months is pretty impressive. It gives me a lot of, I believe they're going to do a great job. Just because of the expertise these guys seem to have and the knowledge they have about surveillance systems that I'm just impressed with. And I'm, when it comes to technology, I'm kinda hard to impress, and they did it.
So this is new doors, is that the actual doors, or is that the?
It's the new door swipe hardware, yep, that will go where the new doors are put.
Is that physically doors?
Correct, yep.
I asked the same question first as well, so.
Why do like this door thing has kinda been on our radar for a couple, two, three years ago? You know, if that qualified underneath our our, uh, grant or not, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Tony.
Thanks for putting that together.
Um, if there's no other questions, is somebody ready to make a recommendation or, uh, motion?
So we have the grant, and the balance would be paid out of, uh?
Save or P E P L, correct. The Sa- or Save P E P L, yes. Correct.
And we have enough there to
Yeah.
Cut that difference.
Right now.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. I, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the the bid for Parallel Technologies, um, for all three buildings in the total amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine seventy-five point oh six. for all three buildings and the total amount of two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine seventy-five point oh six.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. And consider approval of new contracts.
Yeah, so we have two. One, Juan Hernandez is the elementary daytime custodian. And, uh, David White is a sub or activity driver, um, probably helping a lot with the preschool routes and some of the times we have individuals that are placed in other places that, through HHS that we have to provide, so he's going to help with some of that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve these contracts? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is approved. Consider approval of PSEO agreement with the University of Iowa.
So I'll try and do this short version of this. PSEO is post-secondary enrollment option. I had talked to Laura about this before and we were going to say no to this. Um, and in talking through this, we have a family requesting this and talking through this with the state. The long and short of is requesting it, we are required to approve that. Um, afterwards, they'll have, when they do this, they have to meet our own, um. Yeah, proficiency requirements and, and other things. They also then, well, if enabled to do this, they have to have taken all the classes possible through our contracted provider, which is NCC for our concurrent enrollment and show that there isn't things left which in, within their focused area of study. And that's what's happening here. So we have to have an agreement in place with the University of Iowa for this and this would be for next school year. And then later, not tonight, we'll have a list of classes that they're requesting within their defined area of focus or area of study. So in short, this is required for us to do.
Would it, would it ever come up that there's, is University of Iowa our only option or could somebody request another college?
They could. They, they absolutely could. They're requesting University of Iowa because it's within their course of study that they're going to ultimately ask about.
Okay. Questions? These would be covered, costs for us as well, just the same as our NCC courses?
A similar concept in how they're built, yes.
I move to approve the PSEO agreement with the University of Iowa.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that is passed. Consider approval of payments to SiteLogic.
And these are the typical invoices we've had each month for the last eight months or so.
Is there a motion to approve these?
Several.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of change to April regular board meeting dates.
So some of this is connected with our budget process and then just timing and dates on the calendar. I don't know when we'll have all the hearings yet. Um, I'll let you know that when that happens, as I mentioned earlier. Um, but in looking at April, our scheduled meeting was on the twenty-first. I believe it's Monday, the twenty-first. I'm just, just looking here. I think that is the Monday after Easter and that in itself isn't the issue. But the timing with that, I know there's a track meet that night and other things going on. And so, and looking at that and still having time to get bills and invoices and follow the guidelines for our budget hearing process. Um, looking through the dates, our recommendation would be trying to find a night that has the least amount of conflicts and we can still get everything done. From a school side of things would be either Tuesday, the fifteenth, Wednesday, the twenty-third, or Thursday, the twenty-fourth, all of them at five thirty PM. If none of those work, then the fourth and final choice would be back to the original Monday. But hopefully, we can get that to move. Are you guys able to tell right now? What works for you guys? Yeah, so there's track meets and other things going on on the twenty-first. On the fifteenth, we did that. There's not track. We're trying to think of you guys and kids involved in things. There is boys and girls soccer that night. I don't know that we have anyone here involved in that. Um, the twenty-third's a Wednesday. Um, I know sometimes with church night, there's things conflicted, but there wasn't any school conflicts. And then the twenty-fourth, um, there wasn't anything other than boys and girls soccer that night as well. And I didn't think that created any conflicts for us from what we could tell when we were looking at the calendar. So that's kind of where we were coming from when we were looking at things. Do you guys have a preference?
I do not. Do you guys?
Um, well, if the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth works, I would recommend, and maybe cut me off if I'm wrong here, Kendra, but maybe one of those dates because the fifteenth is pretty early.
Yeah.
To get things done. And, I mean, it works. We're doing that in February, but I'm just, just saying it's on the earlier side. Would that be fair to say, Kendra?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, we just didn't know what would be available. We were trying to give as many options. So I would say our preference would be either the twenty-third or the twenty-fourth. Um, do you guys have a preference on either one of those nights? I was going to maybe suggest then the twenty-third of April, if that works for everyone. Okay, so let's do the twenty-third of April at five thirty and that's what the motion would need to be.
Okay. We'll ask for somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the April board meeting to the twenty-third at five thirty.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is passed. Moving on to the next meetings.
So just as a reminder, next month, because of similar conflicts and things, we're, it's going to come up faster, but we're meeting on the twelfth. Um, and March, the plan is the normal date, which would be the seventeenth. We will have another, for sure, another hearing. I don't know the date. I'd tell you for sure, but we got to finalize that. But it'd be after the seventeenth because of timelines, but we'll have to have a hearing for the budget at sometime in late March. And then April, we just moved that to the twenty-third. And as of right now, that would be our regular board meeting and our second hearing. Because you have to have two budget hearings and then we'd finalize it during the regular meeting. So, um, and then I don't know, we'll have our work session with Luann, but right now, that's kind of the things that are coming up.
Talking points. Sounds like second semester is well underway and a lot of positive things are happening. I like to hear that.
I'm excited for the camera system.
Yeah.
It's a lot of, a lot of time to track a kid from one end of the building to the other. Current system, you find them, then you go to the next camera. It defaults to the current time. So you have to go back to the time that you saw them on the last camera and repeat that process to follow them all the way through the building. Sometimes it's an hour to find, you know, to track one kid from one end to the other and see what they did. This will be much faster.
This is the first, I mean, they knew that was presented, but they haven't heard the details. So that's why they're excited because they haven't heard any of this before other than right now, so.
It was nice to be able to do that too with the, the grant we had and if we're going to do it, this as well. Deal with putting edge or some of that stuff, I guess, so, yeah. One thing I was going to ask, is there some legislation on those Kim Reynolds or the governor's, uh, on the cellphone thing?
Yes, there is, yes, there is, I don't know about proposed legislation, but she said she wants that to have a cellphone policy. From what I've read so far, I'm, you gotta remember, we're just a week into the session and specifics. It would be a policy that you have to have some, or a regulation, you would have to have some sort of cellphone policy in place, restricting their use. So for what we have in place, I don't know that it would be anything that would change that. At one point, it'd be outright banned.
You had to have something.
Right, and that you're banning it used during class time. Which, that's what our, I mean, that's what I was speaking of. That's what our policy does. Um, evidently, there are some places where it's not worded like that from what I know. I couldn't tell you any, but that's what I know as of right now.
We should add Mr. Wearsma to, uh, to the.
Yes. I love hearing him talk about that stuff because he has a.
Gets excited about.
Yeah, he's a passion for it and he does a great job.
Yeah.
The kids do, did really enjoy the refugee last year. That was his first year doing it. It was a good experience.
I think that's a really good way to tie the reading into that, which has been one of our district goals. So, that's good. Okay. If there are no other talking points, then is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Yep, thank you.
See if the capless can pull it off, huh?
Think so?